Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 9th, 2015 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. Just a few quick notes. If you wouldn't mind, if you've got cell phones, if you wouldn't mind turning those on silent or putting them on vibrate. If you have to take a call, if you could do so in the hallway, we'd appreciate it. If you haven't been with us before, the emergency exits are out the door to your right and then are right, and there's a stairwell just down the stairs there outside. We have, obviously, many special guests with us this evening and a couple of special presentations. But our first special guest is Pastor Chris Martin from Sun Life Community Church. Pastor Martin, I'll invite you up for the city invocation.
Father, this is the day that you have made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. And so, Father, we come with just rejoicing, joyful hearts. Lord, you've called these wonderful people into authority and you've asked us to pray for them. And so, Lord, I ask for wisdom. Lord, you tell us that if any of us lacks wisdom, we should ask generously, and you will give generously. And so, Lord, as they make decisions, the ones on the council, I pray, Father, that you will give them heavenly wisdom on what decisions you want them to make. Lord, I thank you for their service, their diligence. I thank you for their hard work. Thank you for their generous love for the community and for the city. Lord, I pray that you bless them, each one of them abundantly. Lord, we pray that you will have this meeting in your hands, that you will be glorified and honored through all of it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Martin. Our first presentation this evening is the swearing-in of the Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council. So I'm going to invite -- Mr. Mayor, are you going to introduce them? Or -- Ms. Glanz, I'm sorry. I'll invite Ms. Glanz, our Assistant City Administrator forward, to introduce the Youth Civics Council.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Geraldine Adams, she is our Program Coordinator for the Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council. She actually has an exam this evening, so she cannot attend. So I just wanted to invite up all of the young council members up to the front, if you don't mind, right now, and then I'll say a couple of words about everything. A lot of them.
Yeah, spread out a little bit. You got it.
There you go.
So the Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council is a partnership of the Mayor's Office and the Wycomico Partnerships for Families and Children. This is the third year of the Youth Civics Council in our community, and it is intended to give the youth grades eight through 12 of our area a strong voice in local affairs. The students in the Youth Civics Council want to make a difference in their community, have their voice heard in local affairs, develop leadership and communication skills, be mentored by community leaders, maybe behind the table here, work on action proposals and projects, and serve the community. And I know last year, we had some really great ideas, ranging from a mobile humane society unit, a mentoring program, a spelling bee, so I expect greatness from this group as well. And this year's Youth Civics Council is going to be focusing on community issues, community engagement, building connections with local nonprofits and community leaders. We have exciting guest speakers and community engagement projects lined up with Habitat for Humanity, Hope, and From Root to Wings, and many others that are set. And the students from the Youth Civics Council have a passion for the community and passion for inspiring positive change. This year's group represents students from Bennett High, Bennett Middle, Parkside, Salisbury Christian, Wycomico High, Mardella High, and Mardella Middle. So I'd like to ask each student to introduce themselves and say where they're from, what school, and what grade you're in, if you don't mind. I'm starting here. Project, if you want to.
My name is Emily Gutierrez. I am 16 years old, and I'm a sophomore at Bennett High School.
My name is Steve Lee. I am a junior at Wycomico High School.
My name is Melissa. I'm a 3rd at Bennett High School.
My name is Skylar Sample. I'm a junior at Wycomico High School.
Oh, hey, this is Tony Hughes. Tony Junior at Warren Hill High.
My name is Adoel Holt. I'm 15 years old and I'm a junior at Wycomico High.
My name is Pennington. I'm 15 years old and I attend Dayton at my friend.
My name is Jonathan Fudd. I'm a sophomore at Salisbury Christian School.
My name is Josh Yun. I'm 16 and I attend Parkside High School.
My name is Amanda Mett. I just turned 16 and I attend Parkside High School.
My name is Dee Abraham. I'm a junior at Parkside.
My name is Hugo Jones. I'm a junior at Parkside.
I'm Ethan Partey, and I'm an 8th grader at Mardella.
I'm Laura Charlie, and I'm a junior at Parkside.
My name is Sal McRavon, and I'm a junior at Parkside.
Great group. It is my pleasure to introduce this year's Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council. So at this time, I'd like to invite the clerk, Mr. Mark Bowen, up to swear in these young students.
I believe I met most of you last week, so you know the routine. I will do this all together, if we could. If you'll each raise your right hands, all together, repeat after me. I, and state your names, agree that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, perform the duties as a member of the Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council, according to guidelines established by the Salisbury-NYCOMico local governing bodies. Congratulations to each of you.
And I think your family members would love a picture behind the council and mayor. So if you all want to come around here.
There's something I like about all of you before we do this. It looks like you're happy to be here. Very nice.
Good luck this year.
We are so proud of all of you. Thank you again. I thought I said -- oh. Now, before she leaves, I want to make sure I recognize that we also have Delegate Cherie Sample Hughes, who might know one of those members of the Youth Civics Council. Thank you for being here. All right. So next special presentation we have this evening is our Risk Management Service Awards, presented by Mr. Stevenson.
Good evening. On Thursday, October 29th, Jeanne Lloyd and I had the great privilege of attending the 28th Annual Meeting of the Local Government Insurance Trust, otherwise known as Legit, and I'll use that throughout because it's a lot easier. During the meeting, we were briefed with regard to how the trust is doing. We heard a presentation from a very good motivational speaker by the name of Mr. Tim Leonard. It was both a surprise and a great privilege to me to learn that while we were there, the city of Salisbury was being presented a risk management award. In order to receive the risk management award, the participating municipality or county must demonstrate a commitment to loss reduction, provide ongoing training, adhere to Legit's management guidelines, and utilize Legit's training opportunities. Members must score 100% in order to receive the risk management award. So of the hundreds of municipalities and counties that are members of Legit, Salisbury was one of only 13 municipalities to receive the award. So at this time, I'd like to ask Jeanne Lloyd to come forward, if you would. Jeanne, will you come up? Jeanne is our Human Resources Manager and is largely responsible for our compliance with these requirements. So Jeanne, I wanted to take this opportunity to say in front of Mayor and Council, thank you for your hard work and dedication, and if it weren't for Jeanne, we probably wouldn't have received this award. So thank you for that. It also has a lot to do with the rest of the team being willing to participate and make sure they're satisfying the requirements. So I thought it was only fitting to recognize Jeanne for her effort and then ask her to join me at the podium while I present to Mayor and Council the certificate for the 2015 Risk Management Award from the Local Government Insurance Trust. So great job, Mayor and Council, and the rest of the Salisbury team. Thank you very much. Thank you.
As Tom said, it's not just one person. It was the whole group. Committed mayor and city council, collegial group of department heads, and a strong Legit Local Government Insurance Trust to support us all the way through, to help us manage our risk issues. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Tonight's community organization presentation will be delivered by Andrea Bursler, the Director of our Wycomico Public Libraries.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. Over the past -- the part of the library or the service that I want to present to the council this evening is a brand-new service the library started in September called our Homework Help Center. Over the past several years, the librarians, especially our youth services librarians, have noticed that there was a growth in the number of children who showed up at the library and needed help doing homework. They needed supplies. They needed glue, tape, scissors, construction paper. They also needed access to computers, printouts, and software access. As the schools become more technologically advanced, which is a good thing, the homework becomes more technologically focused, and so there was a need to do PowerPoint presentations and a need to do Word documents. And the requirement was to do them on the software, and a lot of children didn't have access to it. They didn't have the funds to pay for printouts. Their housing and their situations at home meant that they weren't able to keep school supplies. You know, they didn't have a quiet place to work. So we began discussing how the library could help meet this need and remove this barrier, because this is a real barrier to school success. If you don't have any place to do homework and you don't have any supplies to complete your homework, you go back into school the next day feeling like a failure, you know, right from the get-go, and that's never a good thing. So in late September of this year, we launched Homework Help Center. It started with a $1,500 grant from our friends at the library. We provide a quiet workspace, all the necessary school supplies anyone could possibly need: computer access, online database help, access to the school's online databases, and for the older kids, also access to their system of turning homework in online and all that sort of thing. We also provide colored printouts, and we have supervision. There's always at least two adults working in the Homework Help Center at any one time who are there. They're not necessarily tutors, but they're caring adults who want to help. We were able to hire a retired teacher to come in and help us manage the project. And the idea is to encourage students to complete their homework, something very simple. The response that we got was much better than we could have imagined. We opened September 28th, and since then, we have had over 130 children already visit the Homework Help Center. The grades range from pre-K to college. We have had college students show up. They cover all major school subjects: math, English, science, social studies, history, penmanship, technology, biology, art, just about everything. We have a part-time staff member, this retired teacher who manages this and oversees the current eight volunteers who work in the Homework Help Center. Additionally, officers from the Salisbury Police Department come in every Sunday and work in Sunday afternoons, helping the kids, and this is working wonderfully. I can't say enough positive things about Chief Duncan and her engagement with the library, with her officers. Currently, the hours are Monday and Wednesday, 3 to 5; Tuesday and Thursday, 4 to 8; and Sunday, 1 to 5. We'd like to add some Saturday hours, but we need more volunteers, and we need to find someone who will be the staff person. We always want to have a staff person and a volunteer. The project has become a pilot for the library, and we are finding that students are now visiting our two branches, both in Pittsfield and the center, looking for these same services. So we're anticipating launching smaller versions of this work in both of those branches in the coming months. However, for now, we're increasing the amount of supplies we're sending out to the branches to at least they have the supplies, even if they don't have the adult there to always help. So the reason I'm here tonight is twofold. One, because some of these wonderful council members showed up the night we had the open house to visit the Homework Help Center and said, you know, "You really need to come and tell the whole city council about this, because this is a really cool thing." So I'm here. Anytime anybody says, "Come talk about the library," you know, I'm there. So we wanted to let you know that your public library is continuing to work to bridge the gap for those who want to learn and grow and achieve, but who may have socioeconomic struggles that make achievement difficult, or may have technology struggles, and that technology is not a help, but a barrier. Secondly, I want to ask if the city would be willing to help us in this. Would maybe the city be willing to do a school supply drive to help us keep our supplies up? Maybe take a month and just collect school supplies for the Homework Help Center? Or encourage some of the staff to perhaps volunteer? Give, you know, an hour or two every month to come in and help? The supplies are used all throughout the year, and the one thing we want to make sure of is that we never have to tell any child, "I'm sorry, we're out of that." Being a librarian, I, of course, brought along reading material, which you all have as your thing. I can't go anywhere without it. You got a newsletter. That's our current newsletter. It shows you all of the activities of the library, which I'm really proud of. Our staff is phenomenal. You also got a flyer on the Homework Help Center, not because I think you all need help with your homework, but, you know, that would be up to Jake to maybe decide, but because I think probably you all know at least one student who might be able to benefit from the knowledge of what we're doing in this center. And last but not least, you got our brand-new, hot-off-the-press 2015 Annual Report, which shows you how very busy we are, both at the downtown libraries as well as the branches, and shows you how wonderful and wide a scope that the staff at the library -- of services the staff at the library is able to provide for this community. I'm very proud of them. They do a great work. So that's my presentation. I will be more than happy to answer questions on either the Homework Help Center or the library in general. Ask away. Yes.
In terms of the drive, do you have the ability to accept donations and donation lines?
Yes.
Yes.
We can. We can do that.
I was just thinking, because all of us now have campaign funds left over. Some of us more than others. But you probably paid for it for a couple of years.
Absolutely, yeah.
So you do have the ability to do that. Then I will say to you tonight that whatever I have left over, I will have a check made at DeCarlo's, and I will bring to you. And let me also say, I can't speak for the school system. That's a bit above my purview at Willards, but I can, through my work with the WCEA and the Education Association, on behalf of all of our teachers across the county, say thank you to you for all the work that you've done since September.
You're very welcome, and thank you for that gift. That will go a long way to helping us keep these kids and supplies and, you know, what we don't want to have to do is start vetting them. If they come in and they say, "I need this," we just give it to them, because we want them to succeed. So thank you very much.
You may have, at the very least, a table full of volunteers for your center.
It's a lot of fun, actually.
Don't ask me to talk to the kids about physics or anything.
No physics, no high-level algebra. You should be good at geometry, though, right? Yeah, exactly. No, absolutely. And the fact of the matter is, we're not looking for experts. What we're looking for is someone who's going to sit there with the child and help them through it, you know? And the caring adult is -- I mean, you're in education, Mr. Mayor. You know, the caring adult is huge. That is a piece of the puzzle that's been missing in a lot of these children's lives, and we're hoping we can provide it. If -- any other questions?
Can we bring the check out to --
I'm sorry. You can make it out to the library, Wycomico Public Library, and just put it in the memo line or the note with it that it's for supplies for the Homework Help Center.
And if the viewers on PAC 13 would like to --
14.
Yes, PAC 14.
Jack, stop doing math.
Not a math tutor.
Not a math. Physics, yes, but math, no. How would they go about donating?
If they wanted to donate either supplies or financially or their time to volunteer, they can stop at the library's website, which is wycomicolibrary.org, and go to the volunteer page, and our contact information is on there as well. Or give us a call, and we'll be glad to help set that up for them. Not a problem. Okay? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Andrea, homework.
Homework Help Center.
I'll now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
Move.
We have a motion.
Is there a second?
Motion second. Any discussion? None. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And a motion to approve the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda tonight, we have the October 12 regular meeting minutes, the October 19 closed session minutes, October 19 work session minutes, October 26 regular meeting minutes, and Resolution Number 2567 approving the reappointment of Sarah Raine to the Zoo Commission at the conclusion of her current term, being December 31, 2015, for a term ending December 31, 2018. And that will conclude the consent agenda.
All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Thank you.
And Ms. Rains, if you're here with us, would you mind rising so we can thank you for your service to the city?
Thank you. I enjoyed every minute of it.
Wonderful addition.
All right. Now entertain a motion to approve the award of bids. Motion second.
Good evening. The first item this evening is RFP 02-16. It's the Award of Bid for the Financial Lease Services. We received a request from the Internal Services Department to obtain lease services for several pieces of equipment, which were approved by council in the fiscal year '16 budget. The bid was then developed as a master lease financing program, which will allow the city of Salisbury to contract for the acquisition of capital equipment items, furnishings, or systems by financing the acquisition through a lesser. The initial period of this agreement will be for two years, with renewal options for three additional one-year terms. The procurement department followed standard bid practices by advertising in the Daily Times, on the city of Salisbury's website, utilizing the city's vendor list, and advertising on the State of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace. A total of five vendors were sent bid packages, with one vendor, Bank of America Public Capital Corporation, submitting a responsive bid by the due date and time of October 7, 2015, at 3:00 PM. Three vendors elected to submit a no-bid. Rates are based on the Federal Reserve publication H.15, selected interest rate swap with a set markup percentage. In your memo, I did list the equipment, the budgeted purchase amount, the rates, whether it was a five-year or seven-year rate, the yearly payment, the five- and seven-year payment totals, and then if there was a prepayment penalty. Note, I did say that there was none, but that really only applies after the midpoint of the lease. So if you pay it off after the two-and-a-half or three-and-a-half-year term, there is no prepayment penalty. Bank of America Public Capital Corporation, which is a division of Bank of America, is one of the largest financial institutions in the United States. The annual payments, as noted above, are projected to be less than the funds that were budgeted in FY '16 to make the annual payments. Note, however, that the actual payment may be a little more or less, depending on the final equipment purchase amount and the H.15 rate at the lease closing date. And again, I did list the items, the department that those are from, and then the lease payments that were the total budget for the lease payments. The procurement department recommends awarding contract RFP 02-16 Financial Lease Services to Bank of America Public Capital Corporation, as they were the only responsive and responsible respondent -- my, my, my -- to the request for proposal.
I mean, it sounds fine. It sounds great. Just not sure what reason there was for only one respondent. Speculate?
We did get a couple of comments back saying that it's just not their market anymore, that some banks felt that they couldn't be competitive, that they've submitted bids in the past and were not competitive, and it just doesn't seem to be the focus for that particular bank or banks that we've spoken to. So they just elected not to submit a bid.
Is there any thought to expanding the vendors?
Well, it's not only the vendors that we send it to. We can certainly look at doing that, but we also post it on several other places: on our website, on eMaryland Marketplace.
Understand. We're pretty much saturated. Any other question?
One. How much of this equipment is replaced, and how much of it is additional?
Well, let's see. With the ambulances, I believe we have two existing ambulances. I think the third one would be just new. As far as the other equipment, Amanda? All replacement.
Any other questions?
Okay. The next item is Award of Bid for Contract 103-16. That's the ambulances, the three ambulances for the fire department. The city of Salisbury Internal Services Department received a request from the Salisbury Fire Department to solicit bids for an ambulance. The procurement department followed our standard competitive practices by advertising on the Daily Times, on the city of Salisbury's website, using our vendor list and advertising on eMaryland Marketplace. A total of two vendors submitted a bid by the due date and time of September 15, 2:30. One was from DPC Emergency Equipment, at about $317,000 per unit, and the other was from Atlantic Emergency Services, for about $304,000 per unit. I did note the exact prices in your packet. The bid documents were reviewed by the procurement department, and Atlantic Emergency Services was determined to be the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. The Salisbury Fire Department has budgeted for the purchase of three ambulances in FY ' '16. Delivery lead time is expected to be five to six months after receipt of order. If the award is approved by city council, the procurement department will secure lease financing from the vendor that's awarded the contract for the lease services. Funds of $917,317.93 are available in the noted account. At this time, the procurement department requests council's approval to award this contract to Atlantic Emergency Services in the amount of $917,317.93, for a total of three ambulances.
Questions? You're done?
Okay. Thank you. All right. The last award, I combined several awards into one, because they're all for the Department of Public Works. It's capital equipment. So we received a request to purchase multiple capital items via cooperative and piggyback -- purchasing programs. Per Section SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding: Exceptions of the Salisbury Charter. Competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance. Contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. This charter designation allows the City of Salisbury to procure items that were competitively bid and awarded at a state level via a state contract, and to also participate in cooperative purchasing programs. The Department of Public Works has budgeted for, and now wishes to secure, the following items. Two dump trucks, a street sweeper, a refuse truck, and a sewer jet truck. I did, excuse me, note in your packets those prices, the source, whether it be a state contract, or I did list two cooperative purchasing programs there, and then the vendors that the contracts would be awarded to. HGAC Buy is the Houston-Galveston Area Council, and I believe I explained that one the last time. The other one that you may not be familiar with is NJPA, which is called the National Joint Powers Alliance. That's a municipal contract, National Contracting Agency, which establishes and provides nationally-leveraged and competitively-solicited purchasing contracts under the guidance of the Uniform Municipal Contracting Law. Joint Powers laws enable members, such as us, to legally purchase their awarded contract, through their awarded contracts. As with HGAC Buy, the City of Salisbury is a longstanding member of the NJPA. The procurement division has obtained copies of all of the contracts. We've confirmed the accuracy of the pricing quoted to the City of Salisbury, and the contract termination dates, and there are sufficient funds in the accounts noted above to move forward with the purchases. If award of all noted items is approved by council, the procurement department will secure lease financing from the vendor that's awarded the contract for the Financial Lease Services. The procurement department respectfully requests council's approval to award the purchases of the various noted capital items to the vendors noted above.
Questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
All those in favor of the award of bids as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair of the House, aye. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2568, the purchase of 709 West Isabella. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2568.
Motion, a second.
Mr. Seaton.
Thank you. Again, Resolution 2568 authorizes the purchase of 709 West Isabella. The property has lost its non-conforming use as residential and is currently classified or zoned commercial. Acquisition of the property at the price of $10,000 will allow the city to market the property as commercial, and will ultimately relieve the property owner of the burden of their inability to maintain the property. Both Neighborhood Services and Building Permits and Inspections recommends that the structure that's there currently be demolished. We would do that with CDI funding, and then reimburse the fund after the property is sold. So if the council would approve this resolution tonight, again, we would be acquiring 709 West Isabella, raising the structure, and then selling the property as commercial.
Any other encumbrances?
Whereover, start with?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Truman.
Clear title.
709 West Isabella.
Ms. Phillips is in the audience, I don't know if you can speak to that issue.
That's been done by my associates.
Ms. Phillips, no, you're not concerned?
No. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Here, none.
All those in favor of Resolution 2568, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair of the House, aye. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2359, for second reading. Additional life safety standards for non-conforming multi-unit structures. Entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2359. Second.
Okay. Since the first reading of this ordinance, it was asked that this be restructured in a way to make it clear that would apply only to converted multifamily dwellings. And so what we did was, we renumbered it to create a new section, making it very clear that this section would only apply to such structures. They've also been defined, this section is applicable only to converted multifamily dwelling, which is a structure containing more than one dwelling that was originally constructed as a single-family dwelling. And I discussed that definition with Mr. Holland, and also with the president of the council before landing on that one. And then the, there was also some correspondence received from someone who's an expert in the carbon monoxide alarms, reporting what was done in Worcester County, and his recommendation was that we not reinvent the wheel and try and say where it should be, but just follow state code. And so following his advice, we went back to the drawing board and picked up the state code applicable for both smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms, and we've incorporated those sections defining where they should be. And those are codes, actually, that would already be applicable under our code with regard to, say, you know, newer construction and things like that, but they did not previously apply to these older converted structures. And other than that, I think everything else has remained the same as before.
So to the best of your knowledge, does that address council's concerns about carbon oxide detection?
Existing in rooms where there was a...
Yeah, the state law, the state law's biggest concern is that these alarms be placed outside of sleeping areas, that's the big deal. And that's, these code sections, you know, explain exactly where they should be, and that's primarily it.
Does this address situations like the Ocean City situation?
Yes, it does specifically address that. Yeah. So we're basically following, we're putting them where the state says they should be in these circumstances.
Good questions? Comments?
Hearing none, all those in favor of Ordinance Number 2359, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 2360, also for second reading. This is an update to, good reference to, currently references building official should reference housing official. Entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2360. So move. Second.
All right, this ordinance, which we looked at previously, there, I don't believe there have been any changes to this one that I recall, but specifically, we're just changing the names of the officials to match what are, in fact, the current appropriate official. In addition to the housing and building official change, we also included the Director of Internal Services instead of the City Treasurer, just to update the code. And the, that's pretty much it.
Questions or comments?
One. The references in here, Boca mechanical code...
But it doesn't define what that is. I think it's probably editorial, but to spell it out.
That's scratched, that's not in the newest one, it's the National Fuel Gas Code.
Let me go back.
Doesn't that remove the reference to the Boca mechanical code?
Heading.
It's changing it from the Boca mechanical code to the National Fuel Gas Code.
Or that's just the whereas clause saying incorrectly refers to that, moving.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Hang on. All those in favor of Ordinance 2360, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 2361. Entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2361. Second.
All right, this ordinance, as reported previously, is directed at identifying, really, who's going to be sending out the bills or the notices, and it designates that the chief of police and the fire chief will do it for the initial occurrences, where there would be no monetary penalty, and that when the monetary penalty would apply, that the Director of Internal Services would then start sending the bills. Other than that, the ordinance...
Correct the spelling of Salisbury.
Uh-oh, where was that?
That might be a good one to get right.
Isn't it?
Line six in the heading.
Line six?
Word, word.
Yep, reverse two letters, thank you.
That's important.
But I was the only one.
I thought it wouldn't be fun if we were Salsa Berry. All right, anything else? All those in favor of Ordinance 2361, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, also for second reading, is Ordinance Number 2361. Entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2361. Second.
All right, this ordinance, as reported previously, is directed at identifying, really, who's going to be sending out the bills or the notices, and it designates that the chief of police and the fire chief will do it for the initial occurrences, where there would be no monetary penalty, and that when the monetary penalty would apply, that the Director of Internal Services would then start sending the bills. Other than that, the ordinance...
Correct the spelling of Salisbury.
Uh-oh, where was that?
That might be a good one to get right.
Isn't it?
Line six in the heading.
Line six?
Word, word.
Yep, reverse two letters, thank you.
That's important.
But I was the only one.
I thought it wouldn't be fun if we were Salsa Berry. All right, anything else? All those in favor of Ordinance 2361, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 2362, also for second reading, this is budget amendment to replace survey equipment. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2362.
Second.
Yes, this is the budget amendment that's already been read previously. This budget amendment is necessary as a result of damage to the equipment for the surveying team, and there were partial insurance proceeds received, and this budget amendment would increase the, would affect the fiscal year 2016 general fund budget, be amended as follows, with an increase in the insurance proceeds, O1000-456935 by $19,000, increase in the current surplus available, O100-469810 by $10,000, and increase in the Public Works Engineering Department by $29,000.
Questions?
Comments?
All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 2363, also for second reading, this is the budget amendment for fencing at the skate park. Entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2363.
So move.
Second, Mr. Tillman.
All right, this is for the fencing, I think, along the roadway, and it would read, now therefore be ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, at the city's fiscal year 2016 general fund budget, be it, and is hereby amended as follows, with an increase in the current surplus available, O1000-469810 by $5,000, and increase transfer to the Community Development Fund, 91001-599114, by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments?
One question, do we still have fundraising going on for the skate park? And what's the level of that at this point, do you know? Um, the committee has, I think, $5,000 of bid rates, and they have a donate on their site right now. Do you have intended uses for that one? Um, that is strictly with the skate park committee, for using it to buy the additional elements.
Questions or comments?
None, all those in favor of Ordinance 2363, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair of the House, aye. And finally, Ordinance Number 2364, this is establishing the advanced telecommunications systems property tax credit. We still never, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2364.
So move.
Second.
This is the tax credit that would result in approximately, or no more than, 10% of the cost of qualifying renovations to a commercial or residential building to meet state-of-the-art communication and utility standards for accommodating advanced computer and telecommunications equipment in any one year, or the city property tax otherwise due for that year. So that's the cap each year. And then the change or addition to this was under E at line 99. This tax credit may apply for up to 10 taxable years, beginning with the fiscal year following final approval, in accordance with Section 3.22.020D. And that was so that it would not be a mandatory 10-year, if the council decided that it could no longer afford to maintain. And that's about it. I think the only other change I made was I did include a description of the state code one more time around line 75, and that was because we were referring to advanced computer and telecommunications systems. The state law actually lists some examples, and I just made reference to the state law, so it would incorporate that.
Editorial change again on line six, establish... It's Salisbury.
Any other questions or comments?
And I think credit goes to Mayor Irtan and Jill Williams for developing this, I think it's a great idea. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And no requests of public comment. In the closing moments, I will just say, I'm sorry, in the closing moments, I will say, thank you for Delegate Anderton, who's here this evening, thank you for being with us. And this is our last legislative session together, so it's been an honor to serve with you. It's been fun, looking forward to serving with you in a new capacity.
All right, we have a closed session scheduled this evening, so I will go ahead and adjourn.
The open session?
Entertain a motion to, or closed session?
So move.
Motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Motion, a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair of the House, aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.